Yep. Alright, we'll follow our regular meeting of council to order at 6:00 PM. The town culminates is located in the traditional Blackwood Confederacy territory. None of the Blackwood people knows their traditional ways of knowing and caring for this land, as well as all indigenous peoples who can help shape and continue to strengthen our community. Um, we'll move right into the adoption of the agenda. Um, is everybody okay with the agenda as it is? Yeah, alright. And we'll go down to our minutes. So it's been a while since we had a meeting here. So our last minutes are from the July 22 regular council meeting. Um, is everybody okay with the minutes?
Yes.
We'll move right on here then to our administrative report. I'm going to the council to see if there's any questions on the report. Um, I'll start with Council poetry.
Thank you, Mayor Matina. Uh, just have a couple of questions. I think number four, um, probably answered by our Director of Operations. Um, of course, uh, Carlena, Director, as she sees fit. So, uh, there's on item C, 2C, it talks about the plan of sanitary sewer lining, which I had a lovely sample that was brought in here. And it says that we had to do some additional lining with the project budget. Does that mean we were under budget to start? Or are we just haven't finished it all? Or is that we're getting extra, I guess? I guess that's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, thanks for the question. Uh, yeah, basically, we came in under budget. Um, so we're, they couldn't stay to continue and do a little bit more. So there's a potential for them to come back later this fall and do some more in statement for the budget parameters.
And do, I guess, do we have how much more yet?
Um, I'd have to pull some numbers and check on that. We haven't got, uh, we won't receive one, um, payment, progress payment from them. So I don't have the final numbers yet, but I mean, it's, it's a fair amount of budget.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
And then my second question, um, with the item T, 2D, the dog park. It's construction is complete, we installed fencing, uh, top show scene. Uh, was there any signage that was gonna go up, I guess, my question?
Uh, yeah, again, thanks for the question. Yeah, we have signage, um, uh, basically rules of the dog park. And there's also a sign asking people not to leave water holes because of diseases. And then there's a large breed and a small breed, a dog science for the gates as well. So, uh, that is just a designated areas. It's not to say that a person who has a small dog and a big dog can't take from it one product. So, uh, just a differentiation. So that'll be put up in dog bag stations as well. Uh, currently, I'm just waiting for the contractor to kind of finish. We had to remove a few posts to be able to get equipment in. Um, they, we're talking soil in the park today. Um, as soon as I can get them in to put the holes back in, we'll have the signage put up. And then there are some areas where they had to reseat that were damaged during construction. So we're gonna snow fence those off to keep mud and keep, let the seat take. So there's a bit to do yet, and I'll, I'll keep the seat price on progression. So we're, it's probably moving on as fast as we can.
Awesome. Thank you.
Other questions, Deputy Mayor? Did you have other questions? No? Uh, many other questions?
I know, I understand you. Um, just out of curiosity, 1B, um, what is our update looking like? Have we had a lot of, um, people calling in for information on, uh, the elections, nominations, those kinds of things? A lot of people expressing interest. I, I see that, I can see our candidate list. I'm just wondering if we got a lot of interest.
Um, thank you for the question. Um, I'll pass off to our Director of Legislative Services. Um, I personally have not received a lot of questions, um, but some might have been fielded through our municipal groups.
Yeah, again, thanks for the question. And the answer is no. What you see is what you get as of today. I don't know if you had a chance to look, uh, Council Caldwell, at the list that was updated today a little bit?
I did, yeah.
Yeah, so that is what's on the website right now, current and beyond that. I, uh, no, I have not received an email nor a phone call nor a question at the counter or, or anything further beyond, beyond that.
I don't know what we have so far. Oh, are you a little disappointed? I mean, I thought people were gonna be excited this year. I guess I better get, I thought I pulled back on the papers so that, you know, more people would jump in. But, alright, thank you.
Great, if there is no other questions with this, we will move on to the minor state report. Um, thank you for putting this together. I'm going to go to council again and see if there's any questions over the park. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Matina. Um, so it mentions under, uh, item 3K, uh, we're thankful for our sponsors. Um, and then at the end of it, there's like a breakdown. Um, but perhaps, is, is there somewhere that shows how much was contributed? Uh, I don't know if we can disclose that at work, it's like a rough number, but I'm just curious if there was.
Uh, thank you for the question, Council poetry. We, um, we do have, um, like a sum of the sponsorship amounts. Um, each sponsor has designated where they'd like their, their allocation to go to. So some of them only opted for minor states, for example, while others, um, also want to contribute to our heritage hall. So we didn't break it down on this table, um, for exact, the exact amount, just for minor states. And some of them, it was a general, we support your community advance type of contribution. But we can provide an update once all that is finalized, to see what the exact amount is.
Thank you.
Another question, Mr. Council? Uh, go with you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor Matina. Not so much a question, but I just wanna say I really appreciate the format and this information that was brought forward. I think it's really great to see how the numbers pan out and everything, and then have kind of that feedback from the event. I think this is something that our council might not have seen in this kind of format this way through our term, but I really appreciate how it's provided for information.
Glad you'll talk that. Did you have something, Council Caldwell?
I do, thank you, thank you. I guess first, I just wanted to say thank you. It looks like you guys worked really, really hard on this. And so, I'm sorry you kind of worked so hard, but I'm grateful that you pulled off something wonderful. I did have a question on your challenges, 2B. Um, and I'm wondering, um, uh, the, the group that used to organize the party in the park, did they indicate that they just couldn't this year? Or was it just sort of an overall frustration that they had lost their, you know, their committee that they were a part of? And thought perhaps it'd step back, or what did that look like?
Yes, I think it was a combination of multiple factors. Mainly, um, volunteerism in the community has declined greatly. Um, and I think it's impacted all of our community groups, including, um, you know, all, all of the groups that used to contribute towards minor states. Uh, a lot of families are prioritizing vacation time, especially with, uh, you know, children out of school. And so their capacity was also very, very limited, and we were advised of that.
Thank you. And so this is sort of a note for us to have bigger conversations about how it might next year. Is that what we're moving?
Perfect.
Sure. Council would like to discuss each of minor states.
As always, we always have to try to look at strategies to increase volunteerism, right? And, you know, what do we need to do to develop those leaders in our community again, right? It's always, always, thank you.
Okay, Mayor.
Thank you, um, just a comment as well, um, if I may. So with this report, it was, it was very thorough, and I appreciated all the information in it. And I think it also gave us a lot of stuff to think about. Um, and really, for me, it raises the question, kind of what you're talking about is the sustainability of running minor states the way we are now. Um, I'm not sure it's the best use of administration's time, particularly our CAO, to be managing so many of the minor event details, um, even though it is very much appreciated. I guess just the way it landed this year, right? Um, and so, you know, having been part of the community in the past and knowing how that has gone and knowing how it is now, I'm not sure that either model is completely sustainable. Um, but what I'm seeing here is, is that this is not something that the town should potentially take on in future years beyond, um, the parade and happy breakfast and things like that. Um, it, it's costing around sixteen thousand dollars, using significant staff resources. Um, is there a better approach? And I think that's, that's what this whole report is about, right? Um, I think that we need to preserve and honor that spirit of minor states, um, but in a more sustainable way. So is it, um, just doing those, the breakfast and the parade and getting other community groups to come inside? Is it, you know, um, holding back a little bit and seeing what happens? Um, I, I'm not really sure. But I guess, um, from this, of this time, do we need direction to move forward? Or a motion to, to do something with this? Or is it just kind of, this is kind of what we've come across? There's been some major challenges this year, some great successes, but, but a lot of challenges, particularly in regards to staff resources and talent.
Yeah. Thank you for the comments and for the question. Um, what I'd recommend at this time is that council accept this report as information. Um, going into budget season 2026, um, there are going to be budget lines for community events um, for our newly elected council to discuss. Uh, so I would recommend that at that time, we, we discuss, um, dollar amounts, budget allocation, um, and, uh, this memo can certainly be referenced because we're close decisions about what, um, council would like to see going forward. Also have to wait and see what council's strategic plans as well, and how all those priorities line up, um, for the community and the whole. So as the town's CEO, I will wait for council's new direction on, on what they'd like to see. Um, and we can certainly discuss this memo and budget fully at that time.
Great, thank you. Pursue.
Any other comments, questions? Um, I just have to say, I appreciate this. Um, I think that this, these are really important to do after we do these major additions, um, whether it's an event or something like that. It's really, I could examine what worked, what didn't. And, uh, I would agree with you about the sustainability and, um, looking at what this looks like, right? While also trying to meet the community with what they're looking for, but not to the detriment of, of everybody, as well as, um, just a lot of time that goes into this as well. And so I, I don't know what that looks like for next year, but I, but I do appreciate the work that went into this to kind of start thinking about what that could be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Big thank you to Melissa as well, who worked very, very hard over the last few months to pull everything together under a lot of pressures. So, thank you, Melissa, for all your work and, and win this together every time.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Great. Um, so with that, we'll move on to our RFDs. We have a couple of them in front of us today. The first one here is about our council orientation onboard schedule. Um, again, this will be for the new council. How, or, um, thank you for bringing this forward to us just to kind of get some, some feedback and some direction on this. I'm going to ask council if there's any questions on the material presented. Yes, go ahead.
Um, I guess, you know, I, I have to say, I think that questions on sort of some of the timelines within the materials presented, is that what you're, or just the manner in which it's coming forward to us?
Uh, it can be anything within, within the, um, the document.
Thank you. Um, I just, um, I'm wondering, uh, if administration had given any thought to the number of hours that you're asking of new council, that perhaps we have to take time from work? Or is there some thought how that can be restructured a little bit? I know the weekends would be misery. But, you know, we might have to take a look at how that is in terms of their ability. I, I just remember that first little bit of the term is overwhelming in terms of all of the expectations, right?
Absolutely. Um, if, depending on the newly elected council, if, um, it is council's will, we can absolutely look at changing the schedule, which will also include changing staff hours, time and compensation as well. Um, because we have to look at working outside of regular, um, hours, um, to achieve those things. Uh, but yes, it is always very common in, in municipalities that you hit a mixture of candidates, some who work from home, some who have corporate jobs, some who have to go into the office. Um, and so it is dependent. One of the reasons why I'm recommending that we post a schedule early on is that we're hoping that with ample, um, time, they'd be able to speak with their employers and say, this is an important time. Um, this is a one-off type of, um, booking. Um, but generally speaking, this is the information required to get them moving forward in a successful way, especially because the timing of it tends to be really quite, um, heavy, as you've mentioned. So, for example, we go into, um, budget discussions quite quickly. And for some of the newly elected officials, um, understanding a lot about the departments can be really helpful and informative when it comes to making budget decisions just within four weeks' time. So, yeah, we're, we're hoping to, to really set up, um, help set up council for success and hope they feel confident and comfortable, um, moving into the new season. So we are proposing, um, for the new strategy to help, um, educate council members the best we can as staff to bring them on. Um, but to answer your question directly, if council, um, would like the schedule changed, they can certainly direct me to this.
I think it's just important to, as I said, we would, we would be very open to staff taking days off in lieu or those kinds of things. And other businesses, they may not be so open in it. I hate us to set that tone right off the start. This is, okay, you know, we're having a high expectation of you taking time from work. Um, you know, there's no getting around it. Sometimes this can have to happen though, right? Yeah. But thank you. This looks really incredible. And I, I'm surprised. I think the trial by fire when you're doing budget was always so invigorating. Actually, this looks fantastic though, thank you.
Other questions, Council poetry?
Um, yeah, I, I, I kind of, I had, it's a long as some of the rain, but for a different reason, I think. Um, I think that, um, I, I do love the response that was mentioned about having, um, it posted at times, we could work off, that's, that's great. Um, and then I guess if you don't need it, you can just get holidays out. If you don't believe it, I don't know. One thing that I was concerned about was the drinking from the fire, this type of metaphor, uh, where, uh, the retention maybe isn't there. And I think at some point, we had talked about doing like ongoing, and maybe this is separate, but, um, I, it is mentioned in here that, and I don't know the content of all of these days. I mean, it's got the general overview. But I believe that some of it, this is above and beyond, was, was mentioned, what the MGE requirements are. Um, so, so my, my, I guess my thought was, um, yeah, and, and it's, and it's always hard to balance that before budget time. Um, yeah, so that was kind, that was kind of my, like, my retention idea, like, um, around having people actually remember it.
I, I agree. I, I know, I have, I have done council orientation before and operating with council, so I completely understand about how much overwhelm it is for anybody in a municipal government. Um, our, our approach, um, is to provide really that high level look at how the municipality functions. Um, each of these sessions will include like a binder, printed information, so you can essentially walk away with reference material as you go. So if something triggers you down, growing it, oh, there's, there's that. And then the ongoing education is, is going to continuously happen, uh, throughout, um, throughout the term, um, but much more heavy, um, on, on the, on the first year until council's feeling comfortable. But, you know, what I'm looking at is, oh, we have, you know, this is typically what this department oversees, and here are some budget considerations of this department. And here are some of the challenges that administration is facing. Here are some successes we've had, and this is kind of what, where we'd like to go. Really kind of a high level, but it allows, um, the new council to, if you're reelected or if you're newly elected, it's kind of like a refresher course on, on the municipality. So, um, we're hoping, like, on the fire hose information piece, that you can walk away with this, buy their, like, printed certification materials and whatnot, so you can reference that as you go. So, yeah, just kind of a, a, a guide. And then the, um, the Saturday is, uh, council's opportunity to meet other elected officials in other municipalities. So the CEOs of the region have all met. We've signed up our councils for that on the Saturday. So it's a great networking opportunity to meet everybody, um, and then all learn, you know, municipal one-on-one. And if you're newly elected, you have the opportunity to work towards your certification through the yearly course, high team master's. Yeah, just a little foundation is my thought process.
Yeah, that's on Saturday. Yeah.
Other questions on the material? Um, I will move, um, that the council orientation and onboarding plan presented the September 2nd to 25th regular council, you've heard this presented. Um, any questions on the motion? Um, just to speak to that, I think that you've done a very thorough job with this. And I think that this is the type of stuff that I'm really excited to see this come. Um, I remember, I remember when we were first sworn in. They're like, okay, it's, you're chairing the meeting now. And I'm like, how do I do that? I know how to chair a board meeting, but like, what do I say? I had no idea what to do with anything. And so I think that this is really nice to give people that, so that they know what the expectation is up, of them upfront. Yes, it is very heavy, but, um, I think that it's that idea too, giving them that high level, and like you said, building that in. And so I think that this is really great so that people have an understanding, right? And they can pre-plan for this, and, um, they are covering all these different areas, and we'll continue to do that afterwards. So thank you for doing this. I, I look forward to, um, seeing the next council be able to go through this and, uh, get all that good foundational stuff in before, before you have to make some big decisions regarding how to chair a meeting. Um, so with that, would anybody like to, to speak to the motion? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, yeah, no, I agree. I think that this is amazing, um, and I think it's beyond smart. I think that it really goes above and beyond what's expected for onboarding and orientation. And I actually think that that is award-worthy. I think it's something that we should consider nominating our senior staff for with like Alberta municipalities. Because, um, I really do think this goes beyond, above and beyond, as the mayor indicated of what onboarding and training, um, we received last time and what I've seen other municipalities do, um, as well. I appreciate, um, the, the stuff that's in here and the way it's written, and it demonstrates, I think, the real desire to close the gap between administration and council, and as well to, um, help teach new skills to council. Um, I also appreciate the schedule and advance notice for potential, um, elected officials because I think that that's very helpful. Um, you know, people are always asking, what are the time commitments? Well, here they are written out. Um, you know, yes, there's some flexibility for dates perhaps, but really, I mean, it's not that much flexibility, especially with these onboarding things, right? And so this is it, um, you know, and I, I think that's really nice that it's, it's in there. Um, I also, while I think it is fire hose, I also think it would have been helpful to have. Um, so I, I very much, yes, there's a lot of information right at the beginning. Um, but, you know, in this organized fashion of what you've described with resources and, um, you know, binders and supports, I think that it's going to be very organized and, and very efficient. And so I'm really stoked on it as well. Um, the regional, I think that's a really great idea. Even when we've done our regional meetings, we've talked about the need to keep these continuing. And so I appreciate the intent to keep that going, um, even between, you know, whatever might happen in, from council to council. So I think this is great, um, and excellent work has been put forward. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak to it? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Matina. Um, this really feels like a way to set up the future council for success. So I'm very happy to see that when I look at where we had come from, like the mayor had mentioned, you know, there wasn't much of an onboarding process. To see it like laid out like this, I think is absolutely fantastic. I know a lot of work has gone into this, so it's very much appreciated. I know this, um, when they're talking about drinking from a fire hose, this will mitigate some of that, to at least have that understanding of how the municipality operates, which I think was something that took some of us a little bit of time to fully wrap our heads around. So I think that this is key information that would really help lay the foundation for a good council term for the next council. So I'm very much in support of this.
Thank you. Any, what else? Go ahead.
I just want to reiterate, I think this is exceptional work that's gone into this. I just am concerned because we're, we're really trying to invite more and our people to step forward and bring their name forward. And if they see this as a reflection of the time commitment, my worry is of intimitude from not wanting to do that. And so that's sort of where I'm sitting. So I'm thinking if there were, if we broke it up a little bit better and did some evenings and did a little bit of weekend stuff, instead of like asking people right off the hop, you're going to be taking three days off here, then you're going to be taking, uh, four days off here, you know, within weeks of each other. Um, my fear is it just might stop people in their tracks rather than putting their name forward. Um, having said that, you know, I'm not going to, um, you know, change the fact that I think that it looks just exceptional, the amount of time that you want people to put into learning how other roles are.
Cool. You're good? Okay. Um, so I move that council, the council orientation and onboarding plan presented that the September 2nd, 2025 regular council meeting, you've heard this presented. Um, I will call a question, all those in favor? Opposed? The motion is carried. So we'll move on now to our next RFD, which is the committee meeting schedule for the remainder of 2025. Again, we do have the information in front of us. I will ask council if there's any questions on the information that has been presented. If there's not, would anybody like to make a motion? Go ahead.
Um, I move that all scheduled policy and specialized committee meetings in November and December be canceled to allow the newly elected council to attend onboarding in the Alberta municipalities convention and begin strategic planning.
Let's listen, any questions on the motion? If not, Councilwoman Ackerman has made this motion. Would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, briefly. Um, I just think that this is a good idea to allow for people to have that, um, bandwidth to be able to take in what they need to take in, with it being so busy, or even before Christmas, just in general, and the holidays. Um, having a little bit of a break from some of the committee work isn't gonna be a bad thing. And then you can really focus on that strategic planning and narrow down where council wants to go and then make sure that all the committees are in line with that. So I'm happy to, happy to see this come forward.
Great. Would anybody else like to speak to this at all? If not, I, Councilwoman Ackerman's moves that all scheduled policy and specialized committee meetings in November, several be canceled to allow the newly elected council to attend onboarding the Alberta municipalities convention and begin strategic planning. So we'll call a question, all those in favor? The motion is carried. Moving on to our next one here. So we do have a water rate increase RFD that is in front of us. Um, today, we are really looking at this, the purpose of this is more around the potential budget implications for this. And so I am going to ask council if there's questions on the RFD, um, that hasn't been in front of us.
Got a question, back it please.
Sure.
Um, thank you. Um, is our agreement, um, with the community that when we set our rates, they're locked in until the previous, or until the following budget year? Am I correct in thinking that?
Sir, can you re- respond to this question?
Yeah, certainly. So, so, um, once we set our rates for, say, water, um, it has to remain the same until our new budget term when we set new rates? Am I correct in thinking that? Is that why we're, um, is that why we're covering that shortfall from September to December, or?
Thanks for the question. It doesn't have to be set. This is a council decision, whether we raise those rates or whether we cover that shortfall. Cause it'll be short notice, you know, within that, within, with it reserved for the remainder of the year. When budget comes around, I'll be looking at those new costs that have come in and then adjusting that rate accordingly for January 3rd of 2022.
Thank you. Please.
Just to clarify though, you were asking if this is kind of like the standard, that like we kind of say it's a locked-in rate for that period of time?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if once we set our rates, that we're locked in for that whole year. Because it just, it just seems a little bit, um, it seems a little bit uncomfortable that they would, they would raise it by this amount with a very short, uh, notice within the midst of a budget year. It, it makes no sense, right? And I think that if we were to request, uh, an increase, you know, sort of that mid-year, it would be accompanied by the letter indicating such.
Any other, any questions on the material? Anyone? Would anybody like to make a motion? Yes, go ahead.
I move that the water rates not be increased until January 2026 and that any shortfall in the 2025 operating budget be funded through water reserves.
Cool. Any questions on the motion?
Sorry, was there, was there a dollar value? I'm sorry, I, I know it's within our, it's within our package, but I'm wondering if you could let me know what that is, I just.
Yes, is there, is there a dollar value that could be?
That will be asking from our reserves to, to fund that shortfall?
Yeah, go ahead. There's, um, it's approximately 25,000.
So, um, so I guess an motion is that we're asking $25,000 to come from our reserves to offset the increase in cost to water for our residents.
Should it be funded up to $25,000? Or does it not need to include that? Is that what you're thinking? Sorry.
Yeah, would you, like, are you proposing that that be added to the motion?
I think that's important that that, that that dollar value be added in the, uh, budget. Is that considered a friendly amendment?
Sarah, does that, like, does that work from, from your kind of things? Or?
It, it can do. It's just that was a, it was an approximation there.
Okay.
Yeah, but it was an estimate that I based on water consumption during 2024.
Okay.
Uh, the rates are also set, just so council's aware. Um, what, what is paid by the, uh, Water Commission is based on a collective usage amount. And it's a, it's a staggering amount. So the more water that collectively the region, the, uh, which regional water, uh, co-op uses, the price comes down. So if there are some variables to it, I typically just took the rates from 2024. I mean, if there's more water usage, uh, that might be a little bit bigger number. If there's less water usage, it could be less, sorry.
Are, are, would you say you're comfortable with up to the 25,000 for like the purpose of this motion? Or does it need to be adjusted?
Um, I think if, if council wishes, we could adjust that to, say, up to 25,000. If it happens to go over, I'd have to come back and have another agreement with another D40, but that. If it happens to go over, I'd have to come back and have another agreement with another D40, but that needs to be, they take time.
Okay.
When I figure that out after you.
Yes, okay.
So just to clarify, so if we put the 25,000 in there, it'll actually create the exact same problem that we were trying to avoid, which is bringing this back?
Again.
Again.
So maybe increasing the amount to 30,000 just to be safe?
Would that be helpful?
Would it be helpful or put no amount in there?
I think it's important our residents, if they're looking at these motions, I think it's important that our residents understand what's happened and what we're paying to, so that they're not paying it.
I think if you, if you did that to 30,000, I think that would probably, as I say, it's, it's, it's so irregular based on the usage, so it does sound a little bit tricky.
Yeah, it is.
If we do up to 30 and again, it should cover it, but I can't guarantee by the center it will cover it.
I just curious how much money do you have in our water reserves?
At the moment, it's around, for the water reserve, it's around 890,000.
Okay, there it is. Yeah.
So I just want to go back to the motion. You made the original motion with the request to have this changed into it. I guess I just want to see how this can, before I read out the motion, with the 30,000.
My, my, my question is on the purpose of the water reserve. That's, that's all. So I've read that before.
Like about the purpose of the funds?
Yes.
Wait for this first and then we, then we do that. Okay. Excellent. So are we okay with the 30,000 on here? Debbie, Mary, are you okay with having that 30,000?
I guess it just, again, with, with the amount being higher, there's still a potential for it to come back, which it probably should if it goes above 30,000. But I think that this was, from what I understand, whatever the RFD is, is that these rates, you know, we've not received the official notification. And so we're just kind of safeguarding something that potentially could come up. So in that case, I guess, I don't think we need to put in a mountain because that amount will show up in the budget anyway.
So what we can do is that we can remove this, we can go forward with your motion.
Okay.
And if, if it happens to be defeated, then we can, we can redo that one too. Okay?
So I can't pull it out and ask it to be an amendment that we go on?
Well, I guess we could, we could do that if you'd like to do that. Do that amendment. Okay?
Yeah. I, again, I think it's really important that we do that because we do want to move this forward. But I think sometimes our residents need plasticity to implement.
Go ahead.
I might get to speak to it.
No, you're good. So, so we're going to give the amendment of, of putting the up to 30,000 dollars if you're making that amendment.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, go ahead and speak to it.
Thank you. You know, I think it's really important, I think we're really, we're good with our money. We're quite frugal and we do a really great job. But because we have good amounts of money in our water reserves, doesn't mean that we should unnecessarily be spending it. And so I think it's really important for our residents to understand that there's sometimes outside of our control that we spend, like 30,000 dollars is a huge amount, or 25,000 is a huge amount of money for us to be taking and, and spending on something like this. And this is outside of our control, right? And so we, we are making a decision that says what's the best for our community. We're making a choice to take it from reserves rather than charging our residents the increase, the 25% increase costs. And so I think it's really important that it's there, that it's transparent and that they can see that we are, we are paying that up to 30,000 to cover any shortfall in that budget, right? And so I would, you know, so I would request that it be an amendment that we go on for that purpose.
Thank you. I'm going to ask if anyone else would just speak to the amendment, so that's a part of including up to 30,000. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Montina. I will agree with Councilor Caldwell on this one. I do think that adding a dollar value in here is good practice for council. I understand that we're going to see this in the budget, but this way we can at least have an eye on things with the 30,000. It would go slightly beyond what the estimated numbers are, so likely won't come back to us. But in the case that it does overshoot by a long shot, then we're at least aware of that and we can look at making a decision at that time if we want to increase the actual cost of the residents. I am a little bit fearful of having it open-ended because we don't know what that looks like. If it comes in and the numbers that we're projecting to see are actually higher than they are, based on this motion, we could be 50, 60,000 dollars in the reserves depending on how things pan out. Unlikely, yes, but there is a possibility. So I would like to see that capped on it and then just brought back to council to further evaluate, should we get to that position.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this? Go ahead.
Thank you. I, I, so I guess it's, I mean, this isn't a huge hill to dance, but I just think with the purpose of how it was brought forward, with, with it being more just a, an ask that it be kind of set aside, kind of held over, I just don't know if we need to put it a dollar amount in. And I think that putting a dollar amount doesn't mean we're going to track it any better. It, it doesn't mean that it's going to come back, right? Like it just, I, I think again, it's kind of contradictory to what's been asked of us to get us through this season. And so being that, again, if there's a 30,000 dollar difference coming out of reserves, we will see that in the budget and there will be an explanation for that, that I don't believe that there needs to be, this is not.
Excellent. Would you like to speak to this a lot?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Um, I guess for myself, thank you, thank you for bringing this forward. I think that there's, there's protocols, both sides, obviously. I, I think that one of the things that I'm way of actually with this is looking at the, the motion being, being able to stand out its own. And I think that we have to have the, the number in there and I hope that we don't have to bring it back to council. I hope that by getting that little bit of, of, or even some question, I can do that. Because I, I do agree with what, what you're saying here too, but like if this motion is out there, like how much is it? We have no idea, right? And if someone were to read this, you wouldn't know. And so I am agree with, with including that number in there. If 30,000, like, I'm, like, I don't care if this is even up to 50,000 with that, with that knowledge, obviously, of it being, it'll be adjusted to what it actually is, so that it doesn't have to come back to avoid that administrative component of it. But I do believe that it would be, some number needs to be included in there. So that's what I was saying. All right. So we have the amendment to include up to 30,000 dollars within this motion. I am going to call a question on, on this, the amendment. All those in favor of including up to 30,000 dollars? Opposed? The motion is carried. So the new motion that we have here, it's been moved by Deputy Mayor Florence, that the water rates not be increased until January 2026 and that up to 30,000 dollars in the 2025 operating budget be funded through water reserves. All right, any questions?
If I, if I could, I think it may not be showing the intent of it if we, by scrapping, by writing a line through any shortfall. I think it should say up to 30,000 to offset any shortfall in the 2025 operating budget. Because that's really what it is, is a shortfall in our operating budget, our 2025 operating budget. And this is an amount to offset any of that shortfall. Am I correct in that?
Up to 30,000 dollars.
So I'm just hopeful up until 30,000.
I, I see what you're saying. I just don't know how to fix it off the top of my head.
I think the two offset any shortfalls would be.
Yes, that, that makes sense. Does that make sense, everybody?
Yeah.
So I'll read that again here. So it's been by Deputy Mayor Florence, that water rates not be increased until January 2026 and then any shortfall up to 30,000 dollars in the 2025 operating budget be funded through water reserves. Makes sense? Yes.
So I guess, so my question is,
Yes.
what is the, what is the intent of the water reserve?
Okay.
Intent of the water reserve, generally for capital type items. That's not to say that council can't use it for items such as this as well. There's no, as you'll see later on when we talk about the reserve policy that's coming forward later on in the meeting. We haven't actually listed exactly what these reserves are for and there's actually a reason for that. And that is that we're repeating this later as well. To give council those opportunities to be able to be a little bit flexible with some of the items that might come up that we need to cover.
Thank you. And then my, my second question is related to budget. So we, we set our, I guess, our interim, does it align, our interim budget is going to be ahead of the January 26, but we'll, we'll take that as our start date, I guess, as well. That aligns with our other budget. You're in?
I see what you're saying. Yes, the budget will come before you end. So the final figure of this won't be known when I present the interim budget. So there's a little bit sort of in, sort of count before the law. So you can't go back and, I think to Councilwoman Ackerman's saying, maybe you could maybe then add to the rates, but we can't go back and add to the rates for 2025. So this, this will be covered by reserves for 25 and then in 26, we'll look at those new costs and adjust those rates for the entire of 26 to cover those new costs.
Thank you. All right. Have you got any more questions? All right, let's go back to this. Would anyone like to speak to this? I'll go, I'll go with you, Debbie, and I originally just to speak to this.
Ah, yes, thank you. This was a great question. I, I guess, the, the purpose of the RFD and the purpose of the motion is to free up potential allocations from reserves without affecting the 2025 budget, to keep funds available in case of an, of an election. And then we have official, when we get official notice of the increase, then the funds are set aside. And then what we've talked about, the rate to be passed on to residents in 2026. And so that is my reasoning for supporting this motion and for sponsoring it.
Excellent. Would anybody else like to speak to the motion? Go ahead.
I, I, I think it makes a lot of sense. What was mentioned before about having, you know, we were not sure about the increase and, and then just how we're managing our budgets and ongoing finances from year to year. So I think it's appropriate action to, to prepare us for what might come forward.
Anyone else? If not, so it's been by Deputy Mayor Florence, that the water rates not be increased until January 2026 and then any shortfall up to 30,000 dollars in the 2025 operating budget be funded through water reserves. So call a question. All those in favor? The motion is carried.
Thank you, Mayor Montina. Just for everyone's information, I will record the fact that amendment was made and that there was one member opposed to it. Just for the record, just trying to tie those things on the fly against them. Like messy when we're still juggling. I'll make sure it's tidied up and on the record.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, moving into our last RFD for today. So this is the wetlands development plan proposal. Again, we do have the information in front of us. I will ask council if there's any, any questions on the information. If there is not, I will speak.
I'd more like to make English.
Yes.
Because I, I just, so when we're looking at the, like, one through three, are we, are we saying that concept number two, is it locked into that very specific layout and everything? Because I'm not seeing on there, we had some conversations about sort of the, the native garden, that we were looking at certain types of plants and maybe like a bench or something like that.
That's shown in the north, northeast corner.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, of the, of the phase two.
Oh, what's it been called? Because I was looking at phase two.
I think I can pull it up on the screen now.
Well, good. I'm going to trust you because I've not seen it in the, in the map and I was a little disappointed thinking. But I guess my question is, is it, I mean, it's fantastic. Number two is fantastic. But are we locked into those specific locations with those specific items? Or are we planning a little bit of flexibility, a bit of room somewhere in there?
Well, that's, I, I, I think the idea of master planning is that we would have space for creatures, let's say, and items. So for the first phase is planting trees particularly, and you're not moving a tree after you plant it, right? But it's ideal, so the idea is that, yeah, I mean, you could put in anything in that zone, let's say, that's, you know, where the, where the skate park pump track is located. And you could put anything in that zone. It doesn't have to be as, as it's drawn right now. But those trees, you know, the irrigation that's tied to them, like the lighting fixtures, like that part would, would, is something that would hopefully be fixed so that we wouldn't have to make adjustments to it later on, so. But that's the idea is that we would just, we would fix those elements, the trees and those things that are in phase one. And then phase two, we would work towards those elements that have been presented, yeah. And if there's tweaks to those as, as the project goes along, I, I, like, I mean, plans change, the best plans change always, right? So I don't think there's anything blocking change, let's say. We, we had done a lot of consultation to this point already with many community, community members. And, you know, we've had lots of responses, like it's shown in this report here. Ninety, over, over 90 responses from the, from the minor states. And, and so, and it looks like we're on track, generally speaking, with what the public is asking for. So I don't know that changing things would be advisable at this point, but maybe the public opinion shifts in the future and we need to adjust, right? So I, I, I think that's how, that's your, my question, if I may.
Thank you. Really, really impressed with the work that you guys have done on this.
All right.
Engagement.
Would anybody like a motion? We've got two potential motions there.
I'll move the recommendation for the town to proceed with phase one and phase two design recommendations.
Great.
Oh, I think that's the, the top one.
We're doing the bottom one first?
The bottom one. Sorry, I, that's the only one I was looking at here. Sorry.
Okay. Do, I just want to make sure that we can, like, we can do the bottom one first. Or are they like intended? What? They're intended? Okay. Okay. So you'd like to, to do the, the bottom one here?
Yes, yeah.
Um, any, do you want to, do you want to read it out or tell me to read it out?
I can read it out. I move that council approve the wetlands specialized committee recommendation for the town to proceed with the phase one and phase two design recommendations for the wetlands park as determined by the committee and reviewed by the public. Further, the council considering beginning budgetary discussions, beginning with the budget 2026 deliberation, specifically regarding the implications, fiscal planning and funding opportunities for the orientation of each phase.
Excellent. Any questions on the motion? No, Councilwoman Caldwell has an information. Would you like to speak to this?
If I could, please. Thank you. So this has been a, this has been a project that has been happening, you know, over the past two years. There has been a number of different opportunities for community engagement and I'm really impressed with the work that that committee has done, bringing in the consultants. And I'm thinking there's been four different engagement opportunities with this project, starting from the first one in, in fall of 2023. And so there's been a significant, a significant amount of work and I would like to move this forward, please.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to this? Debbie?
Thank you. I, I'm in favor of moving forward with the wetlands project and I need to support the committee's recommendations to proceed with phase one and phase two and to work with community partners. Sorry, that's the other motion. I think this is a really exciting project for Coopurs and it aligns well with our goals around recreation, connection and environmental responsibility. That being said, what I've been hearing from residents and particularly at minor states when I was chatting with people, is that they really value both amenity and aesthetics. People really want the park to look beautiful, but they also want it to be functional. So one thing that I ever heard a few people say is that they don't want to lose the functionality at the cost of aesthetics. So like specifically, and I've heard that actually a few people gave comments around the rock feature, that like, yes, a rock feature is nice, but the park can still be nice without, you know, specifically doing the rock feature. You know, something like that. And again, not getting into the specifics of what the committee's put forward, but I appreciate your comments about what you've said about, you know, phase one, it's about the planting, but phase two is really, that there is some flexibility in it, but the spaces will kind of be designated. Because again, keeping in mind that feedback that, yes, we want a really nice park and I believe it'll be a really nice park, but it doesn't need to be like, you know, I'm going to say the Cadillac, right? Like it, we, we don't want to lose our pump track just because we want like the really big rock. And so I think that's a balance that we kind of need to maintain. And then also I just wanted to speak to the committee, excellent job for, for giving that promotion at minor states because there was a lot of input there and, and I think that was just really good to, to chat with people and to get that feedback, even for myself, like a lot of my conversations were around that with people and it was good to see where people were at. So just keeping that in mind. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to say thank you to all the committee members that have been involved in this. I know we got a couple of members of the public that really stepped up and they have a really good knowledge base for some of the ideas that they have there. And then I also wanted to thank the public for providing their input. I know we hoped you guys a couple of times. But I think it's really important for us as council members and community members to kind of have a general idea of what the public's looking for in a situation like this because it is going to be such a big future for our town. So I just want to extend another big thank you for everyone that's been involved, be it filling out a survey, giving your input, I move the House, or involved with the committee work and everything like that. And I'm just happy to see this coming forward. I think this is, I know when we were looking at the proposals presented to the committee, this is kind of like an in-between. Kind of took some of the features that the town was asking for and found a way to make it all kind of work together. So I'm really happy to see this forward, come forward.
Thank you. I just want to say how impressed I am with this committee. I think that the work that you guys have done has been, it's been top notch. You really showed us what a committee should be and how they should operate and also engage, I think, the different residents as well. And so I'm really excited to see that, even though this is at the end of our term, to see that this, this whole process kind of come, come to completion, as well as with the next phases of this actually being built. So I'm very much in support of this as well. Would you like to close it off?
I think you've all spoken eloquently towards it, so I think we're good.
All right. So it's been moved by Council Callbell that Council approve the Wetlands Specialized Committee recommendations for the town to proceed with phase one and two, design recommendations for the, design recommendations for the Wetlands Park as determined by the committee and reviewed by the public. Further, the council considering beginning any budgetary discussions, beginning with Budget Twenty Twenty Six deliberations, specifically regarding the implications, fiscal planning and funding opportunities for the implementation of each phase. I will call the question, all those in favor, the motion is carried. We do have that motion. Would you like to make that motion?
I move that Council approve the recommendation from the Wetlands Specialized Committee that the town work and coordinate with a community-based nonprofit society that will be created to address wetlands funding and the other parks funding projects with municipal representation on the nonprofit group.
Excellent. Any questions on the motion? If there's not, it's been, do you have a question?
Sorry, I just, I was wondering if this is a switch that will be created to may be created? Does it friendly amendment potentially?
Yeah.
Because it, yeah. It may or may not be, I guess, we may or may not need a new one.
Hmm, okay.
There may be one we can work with existing in the community. That's, that's really my intent is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good with that? Excellent, thank you. Any more questions on, on the motion? Okay. So submitted by Council Ackerman's, the Council approves the recommendations from the Wetlands Specialized Committee that the town working, working with a community-based nonprofit society that may be created to address wetlands funding and/or other park funding projects with municipal representation on the nonprofit group. Would you like to speak to this at all?
Yeah, just when we were looking at this as a committee, funding has been something that's been on our radar since pretty much the beginning. We were looking at different grant opportunities and how we can fund this without putting a burden on the taxpayers. One of the things that it came up was the way that the spray park was funded through a nonprofit that was working together with the town. We felt that they, that there would be an opportunity to work with a group like that that could address some of the grant opportunities out there. We felt it was important to have a municipal representation on that group, be it either administrative or from the council side, just to kind of create that link and connect the dots if need be. So we were happy to see that. I think that going forward, I was talking with the committee of, is the committee gonna remain a committee and how might that look? There was thoughts being given to shifting that to the nonprofit, or if it was, you know, maybe the committee is looking at grant opportunities on its own that they could share with that group, with administration to help find some funding opportunities for the Wetlands Project. But that's kind of in the nutshell where this is coming from and looking at an alternative way to fund this project without putting it all on taxpayers.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to the motion?
I think, I think Council Ackerman's said it well, but yeah, I, that's exactly how the spray park funding reason is done. There were grants that were available to that society that couldn't be accessed by the town and vice versa. Funds that were available to the town that couldn't be accessed by society. So in together injunction, we're able to, you know, work together and achieve more than we do are just by, from the loan, right? So I, the, the having the representation of the town formalized on whatever that signing that ends up working with the town on this, I think is key to making sure that there's, there's a link and, and, and I don't want to say oversay, but it's, you know, input, I guess, let's say, there's, there's constant input being, being back and forth to make sure that, you know, everybody's aligned and we're not, we're not being super open, so.
I very much agree with that. I think that that's something that would be really, really helpful, right? For to develop that partnership and keep it going. Because this, like, as I've kind of read this, this could be something that helps with this park, but it could also be helping with other parks and other things into the future. And so I do believe that you're right with that community or that municipal link being there as being very, very necessary for this, but it's very exciting. Anyone else like to speak to this? Would you like to close it off?
Yeah, just one other thing that I was thinking of too, is after this project is, it's on its way to its funding. I know some of the shortcomings from the comments that we saw where people were looking for like the capable courts or other courts like that. But if we did have a nonprofit that we were working with to address some of those recreational activities, there would probably be opportunities for them to work with the, with the town or with council to kind of hit some of those notes and say, although it might not be parked at the Wetlands, there's an opportunity in other parts of towns and there's grants available, so we can go after that. So this is not just intended solely for the Wetlands area, but it could be the greater recreation master plan across the town as a whole.
Excellent. All right, so it's been moved by Council Ackerman's, the Council approve the recommendation from the Wetlands Specialized Committee that the town work and coordinate with a community-based nonprofit society that may be created to address wetlands funding and/or other park funding projects with municipal representation on the nonprofit group. We'll call the question, all those in favor, motion is carried. All right, we're moving right along here into our bylaws and policy section. So the first one that we have in front of us is the RFD for the Regional Emergency Management Bylaw. And you'll see within the material there that we do have to make a couple of amendments that were requested of us. And so I will just go to Council to see if there's any questions on the material that's been presented. Yes, go ahead.
Through the mayor to administration, I was just wondering with the proposed reserve accounts that are being suggested, are those the only ones that are being suggested and then every other one is kind of being?
Are you, are you on the reserve policy?
I think so.
We're, we're on the regional emergency management.
Oh, yes, I am. Oh, yes, I am on the reserve policy. Yes, I was like, yeah, I'm on the reserve policy. Are you? Yes, I'm on that, my bad.
Do you have any, do you have any questions on that one?
No, I was wondering where my questions went though and I'm like, oh, I guess I deleted them. Sometimes it's a lot of sense, I'm sorry. No questions. Where did my questions go? Sorry.
Any questions from Council on, on the material for the regional emergency or bylaw? We are looking for the three readings tonight, so I will ask if anyone would like to go ahead.
Sure, I'll move, I'll move that the regional emergency management bylaw number four sixty seven dash twenty five be read a first time.
Any questions on the motion? Not? Council Ackerman's made the motion, the, the bylaw be read a first time. Would you like to speak to this at all?
Just shortly, this is just kind of a key thing with what the minister, I believe it was the ministerial order is asking for. So it's, nothing major is changing, it's just kind of following the rules put before us.
Excellent. Would anybody else like to speak to this? All right. If not, Council Ackerman's has made the motion that the regional emergency management bylaw number four sixty seven dash two five be read a first time. Call the question, all those in favor, motion is carried. And looking for a motion for the second reading, please, go ahead.
Thank you, I got this one right this time. So only but the regional emergency management bylaw number four sixty seven dash two five be considered, be read a second time.
Any questions on the motion? If not, Deputy Mayor has made the motion for the second reading. Would you like to speak to this at all?
Yes, just briefly, I think that when we talk about this, entering into this ministerial order with the other municipalities that are joining with us, this is really a solution for us, as we've talked about in the past, for our ability to respond to emergencies and to have a proper emergency management team. So this regional emergency management bylaw is, it needs to be changed as stated and as written in the report. Just a few things, there are a few wording in order to be accepted as, as a ministerial order. And that's important too, to have the ministerial order so that towns catch us back out when it isn't, you know, working for them that month or from council to council. And so it's important to get the bylaw right so the ministerial order can be right because once we're in the ministerial order, it's really hard to get out of it. But as we've been working on for a long time, this is very important and it's an answer to emergency management in CoVest. So always happy to see things like this coming along and keep them moving in the right spot.
Would anybody else like to speak to this? If not, Deputy Mayor has moved that the regional emergency management bylaw number four sixty seven dash two five be considered, that'll be read for a second time. I will call the question, all those in favor, motion is carried. And then would somebody like to make a motion for?
I can do that, thank you. I'll move that the regional emergency management bylaw be considered, oh, sorry, bylaw number four sixty seven dash two five be considered for third reading.
Excellent. Any questions on the motion? If not, Council Callbell has made this motion. Would you like to speak to this at all?
Just that I'm grateful that we're getting this in compliance so that we can move forward with our, our regional emergency management team. I look forward to that. Well, thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak to this?
It only took me two readings to realize this, but there's a typo, so.
There's a typo?
I think it's three A delegates the statutory, statutory.
Statutory, okay.
Yeah.
So we can just, we can just shake that, right?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see that too, honestly, you know, kind of, but.
How many times did you read it?
Let's defend ourselves as he was provided to by an outside source. We can make that and maybe look for the other little typos like that, which reads clearly at least, so thank you.
Thank you.
So it's been moved by Council Callbell that the regional emergency management bylaw number four sixty seven dash two five be considered for a third reading. I will call the question, all those in favor, that is carried. And finally, would someone like to do the third reading?
I, I do that the regional management bylaw number four sixty seven dash two five be read a third time.
Excellent. Any questions on the motion? Would you like to speak to it at all?
I think it's important.
Excellent, all that. Would anybody else like to speak to the motion? If not, Council Coltrier has moved that the regional emergency management bylaw number four sixty seven dash two five be read a third time. I will call the question, all those in favor, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
Well, now move on to reserve policy, so you can get your questions ready. Again, we have the information in front of us. I do believe that, I think that it's been updated now within our, we have the RFD now. I think it was, was it this one? So we should have our RFD as well as, as the draft policy in front of us. I will ask Council for any questions that they have, starting with Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, appreciate that. So I guess my question was around, so four point two point two, it talks about the following reserve categories being established. And then each reserve will be assigned a category. So we have in there, we have capital, operating utility, offsite levy and projects. So I guess just not exactly sure how to ask that. So are we only going to have those five reserves or each reserve that we currently have will have those five categories within them?
Thanks for the question. Now, the, all the reserves will be allocated and categorized. So those reserves that we have will remain.
Okay.
And then we will then allocate them as the capital one, operating one, or utility one, or project one. So they're, they're not the reserves, they're just the categories that the resources will flow into.
Okay, so it's, it's more of like a, it's a reserve management as opposed to the types of reserves? Or like the, the names of reserves, because we're not, we're not looking at, because I know we have a lot of, when we talk about these reserve conversations, it's kind of two parts. So we have our conversations about like, are these useful, are these good names? Like, I think we have an old agro spirit one or something. But what we're talking about here is just like surplus management into the reserves, what our targets are for each of the categories within the reserves. And it's not talking about moving around the reserves and changing names and things like that. It's just talking about the individual reserve and the process for within it.
That is correct. We're not changing the names or anything of the reserves that you already have.
Right.
For example, you know, the water reserve, the soil reserve, the storm reserve, would all be capital reserves. Right? So they've got three different reserves that they all have. For, just as, as an example.
Okay, yeah.
Whereas obviously an operating project reserve would be an operating reserve. So they're just to sort of give, give a, a category to those reserves.
Okay, okay, okay. So, okay, you're on with you. Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And so what if they don't fit into this category? Like our agro spirit one? Or the agri, like that old one that's not been contributed to in years and years. Is that in a conversation where it comes back to council and says like, you know, what are we doing with this?
That is true. We will bring them back. Once this is passed, I can start the work on going through those reserves and doing all of the, the items that we have within this policy. If anything turns up that doesn't fit, then I, I can always come back and talk with council. But I, I have to be honest, this was written by my predecessor. It was, it was great. I didn't have to change very much of it at all. He did a great job. So I'll then take this and apply it to our existing reserves that we have here.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for bearing with me on the questions. So I was like, trying to wrap my head around this. Yeah, thank you. I was very helpful.
Uh, Council Coltrier.
So it's mentioned, it mentions here that, so under four B, it mentions the ten percent operating budget. And then it also mentions it under four two three D balance of ten percent. So, so I guess that, that would be for, if, if we had a, so overall, our overall operating budget and then our like individual operating budgets, is that the intent, that the both will have at least ten percent?
Thanks for the question. They're two, they're two separate things. The unrestricted service is an amount that we have that each year our surplus deficit sort of flows into that. If it gets to a point where it's over ten percent of the operating budget, we would then bring that back to council and say our unrestricted service has X amount of dollars. Over the ten percent is, you know, this amount of money. Council can now allocate that to separate reserves and then we can move it out unrestricted into actual reserves. The ten percent for the operating is, it's, it's a benchmark to go towards so that within our operating budget, operating reserves, we could have ten percent of regular, of regular operating expenses. For example, if we were to set up a snow removal reserve, we would make sure that had ten percent of the usual operating cost within that. As a, as a goal to set, obviously we can't just automatically, it's all, it's all budgetary, comes with taxes, that sort of thing. But that's the, what we'll be working towards for those sort of operating assets.
And ten percent, is that, is that some kind of like regular standard, I guess, that's called by?
It's, it is an, an under of policies that we, that was, that we looked at for sure. I've seen them in the past as well. Payback in that ten percent within that reserve.
Thank you.
Hello, Gretchen, go ahead.
Thank you. And, and so this would be separate than intentional reserves. So like if we have a MOU with a county, fire trucks and things like that, right? This would, this would stand separate from those kinds of things? So we have a, we have an agreement with the county that we're supposed to set aside X amount of dollars per year to purchase a new fire truck. And so would that fit within this policy as well, or is that sort of standalone?
I would like to check on that, I'm afraid I'm not familiar with it.
Okay.
It's a, the capital allocation schedule for.
So is it part of, is that it's part of that reserve that goes into five every year?
Yes.
Or?
Yeah, it's not even, it's not even a business.
Okay.
And then, and then that makes it easier for auditing, is that the idea? Makes it easier for accounting to have them just separated into these categories rather than have a bunch of little pockets everywhere? Come on, it feels far more creative that way.
Honestly, the reserves are at council's discretion. We can have as many or as few as we want. The only ones that are restricted is the offsite area reserves because they have four specific premises. The other reserves are at council's discretion to put however, you know, one big reserve monitor, I don't recommend that. But if that is at council's discretion on how many we have, or how few we have.
It might not be a bad idea to have the county one separate though. Because that's quite a huge expenditure, like the fire trucks are upwards of five hundred thousand now. And I thought, what's our replacement every, so, every so many years? But I'm being able to plan years.
It, it depends on the capital. It, it depends on the.
We have a lot of capital items that are binding that way, go insurance replacements, truck replacements, that's all part of the.
Yeah, I think this is specific to an agreement, I guess, a memorandum of understanding that we signed offline with the county. Although I don't think it holds any more value, it's, it's expired, isn't it?
No, our agreements are currently in place.
Okay.
Yeah, so it just, it just depends. A lot of the equipment have, are, it's already been paid for, but some are due for renewal in X amount of years, for example. And that agreement is separate because it's cost shared between the town and the county, because the town services the county. So there, there's some coming, coming up in the future. But it would be no different than our planning for our own, our, our own trucks that we call.
So we have a legal requirement to ensure that it's there and visible and standalone, that as long as we have it, we're good, no matter where it is, kind of thing. It's, I guess that's the idea.
Oh, okay, it's a little country.
Yeah.
But there's not like, if I can, if there's not a huge pile of money lying around in the county, if, 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 if we have this shared purchasing agreement, like it's in the trucks? Like it's not like we have, you know, like it.
Well, I, I think because it's very specific and we've signed an agreement that every year we, we specifically put money, X amount of dollars aside into this amount for these expenses that are shared with the county, and we've signed off on it. So it's not just surplus, or it's not just, you know, it's like a very specific agreed upon. So I just wasn't sure how that fit within this structure, if that was, if it just kind of get rolling, because it's its own.
Yeah, so if there's like, it's on line of just fire department, it'd be labeled capital.
Yeah.
It's in, yeah.
Yeah, it's not like I'm asking for little gold pots hidden in other locations.
I'd like to see bill of expense, see whether it's, you know, if it requires that.
Other questions on the policy? Alright, would anybody like to make a motion? Okay, Deputy Mayor.
I'll move that the reserve policy number C fourteen be approved as presented.
Excellent. Questions on the motion? Not, it's been moved by Deputy Mayor that reserve policy number C fourteen be approved as presented. Would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, thank you. Again, thank you for answering the questions, that was very helpful. I'm in support of adopting this formal reserve policy. It's something that we talked about in the past, I think it's important for the town to have clear guidelines and transparency around their accumulated surplus. The policy provides a structured approach to managing reserves for the categories listed. Having those defined categories, having targets and reporting requirements, I think that will improve our fiscal sustainability and help council make informed decisions in the future about long-term planning. So I think this is good, it's more formalization, it's more professionalism, and I appreciate the work that's been gone into it.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to this?
I'll speak to it, thank you. First, I want to say thank you for the good work that went into this. I think the council and administration have been very, very good at sending money aside for needed items, so that there isn't a abrupt shock when we have those big ticket items. We've been really poor at keeping that very formal. And so I have to say thank you for bringing this out and I'm going to look forward in a, in a better, yeah, just a more transparent and informal manner, thank you.
Anyone else? Again, I think that this is, it feels like we're just like tying up a bunch of loose ends there as we're getting to the truth. So I remember at the beginning, I remember Deputy Mayor saying, do we have a reserve policy? And we were like, no, we don't. And so here we are, right, second last council meeting, we have one, yay! So that's exciting. So thank you so much for the work on this, it's nice to, to see these things again coming together and formalizing things a little bit more so. And so we have better knowledge of things as well, so, yeah, I appreciate that. Would you like to close it out?
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, so it's been moved by Deputy Mayor Florence, that reserve policy number C fourteen be approved as presented. I will call the question, all those in favor? Motion is carried. And then we'll move on to signing authority policy. Again, information is in front of us, I will ask council for some questions on the material. If there's not, would anybody like to make a motion?
Sorry.
Yes, of course.
I do have a question on the material.
Yeah.
Just with regards to, it's on page four, when you're talking about signatures for subdivision and development agreements, we have the first signature required as a development officer or CAO, and then we have the second signature required as a development officer. Because that is the same position signing essentially twice. Did you want to clarify if that was only needing one signature, or if you did need two signatures for that?
I would read done as if second to is required, CAO would be one, and the officer would be the other.
I'm all right with that.
Any other questions on this? Again, at the time, would anybody like to make a motion?
Sure. I move that the signing authority policy C sixteen be approved as presented.
Any questions on the motion? Not, Counselor Armin's has made a motion that the signing authority policy number C sixteen be approved as presented. Would you like to speak to it?
Yes, like the reserve policy, I believe that this one is bringing us up to a best practice for the standard that we operate as a municipality. So I'm happy to see these ones come forward, it might seem a little bit like housekeeping, but it provides the framework to operate in a professional manner. So I, even though it's the second last council meeting of this term, I'm still excited to see these come forward, so we can forward.
Would anybody else like to speak to this? If they have not, Counselor Armin's, okay, move that the signing authority policy is C sixteen be approved as presented. Other question, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Moving right along now to our, to our committee report, so we do have the wetlands specialized committee. Is there any questions on that, or are we okay to just move, move on? We'll move on now to our council reports. I'll start with my own here. Just wanted to, I guess, welcome everybody back to school, first day of school. And I heard your conversation earlier about the new school parking lot and the parking lot that's by the community center. Hopefully that really made it a lot nicer for people to drop off their kids this morning, to know where to park, not have to park in mud holes, great, it's exciting. And so, so thanks for getting that project done before, before school starts. And so it's been, for me, it's been a little bit of a quiet month with, with us taking a little break for, for council. I did have a couple of South Grove meetings I have attended, I did have the opportunity to go to Tabor's table to represent South Grove there, which was a lovely event. We had, we had a lot of delicious food and a lot of different producers. And, and it was just great, it was great to see kind of how they did this event and the economic development component of that. I've also, I've, I've had Shnuk Arch as well. And then on Friday, I had Bears and Reeves, which will, I'm assuming probably be our last one for the term. So that's kind of what I've been up to, but yeah, it was kind of nice to have a little bit of a, a break there too. Yes.
I apologize, before the next one starts speaking.
Yeah.
I, I overestimated my ability to sit for my meeting tonight, so I'm gonna probably have to go.
Okay.
If everyone's okay with that.
Alright. So, happy to meet you. So with that, of, and anyway, any questions, happy to answer. Yeah?
Okay.
Move on to Deputy Mayor's report, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to give a shout out to the town Coverts, the volunteers, the sponsors and to everybody who helped to make Minor State twenty twenty five possible. Especially Kerlyn, and a big thank you to Melissa for all the work that she's done, that's a great job, it was, it was wonderful. I also wanted to give a shout out to everybody going back to school, particularly with the teachers, especially with all the unknowns these days. So just thank you for all the work that you're doing over in the schools. I, there's a few things, I also wanted to, again, thank Melissa for your work that you did with the summer program staff with, with FCSS and Family Times. The, my kids went to one of the camps and they were just so fun and so intentional, and they had so many activities. And yeah, so I just thought that was really, really great, and so thank you for coordinating that. As well, I just wanted to put a thank you to out there, everybody out there who's developing in town right now. Like I've been biking around lots because I'm trying to work out, but that's besides, but anyway. So there's, there's lots happening in town, and there's lots of building happening, and I think that's really great. And I want to give a shout out to Neil Greenwood for continuing to build beautiful houses in town. So as for meetings and events attended, it's been a very slow month as well. Coverts Minor State Weekend, we had a few parades and summer events throughout, throughout Southern Alberta. So it's good to meet with our neighbors and partners and connect that way. As well for upcoming stuff, we have an agenda setting in August twenty ninth, that seems like a, oh, that was a previous one, I actually didn't make that, I couldn't make that meeting. We had MSDA this morning, regular meeting of council, and then on September fourth, we actually have our ORSC board meeting. So that would be the last one in this term as well. And then coming up on September twenty third, which is the day after the red draw, technically, but we have our community future meeting. So that would also be the last one for this, so I do have a question on that, but also later. But anyway, that is it for, for right now, and that's it for my report, thank you.
Any questions for Deputy Mayor? Yeah, not, we will move on to Counselor Armin's.
Thank you. For recommendations, I just want to extend a big thank you to everyone that helped make Minor State celebration amazing. There's a lot of work required to pull it off, I'm very appreciative of everyone who helped. And for everyone that decided to join us in the parade, there are some really gratefulnesses here, so a big thank you from, from me to you. With that, for meetings and intensive, meetings and events attended, I was at Minor's Days, and then in August, I had an Alberta municipalities and an AMSC joint board meeting slash strategic planning session. So if not familiar, the AMSC board is a board that is a business line for Alberta municipalities. We have some members of board of directors, then we have some industry experts that sit on that, and twice a year they get together. And they have a joint board meeting where they can make sure that everything's in alignment for the greater picture of the organization as a whole. That was followed up with a board of directors meetings. The next day, and that was happening in Lacklavish, I was lucky enough to piggyback a perpetuary planting event for my day job in the Edmonton area. So I kind of hit two birds with one stone. Beyond that, we have the Wetlands Specialized Committee, and then going forward, there's Highway Three Plumbing Development Association meeting, economic strategy committee meeting for Alberta municipalities, board of directors meeting. And then I believe we have a Wetlands Specialized Committee meeting, just to kind of wrap up a few last things. And then for other updates, I did have a few members of the public reach out about running for election. And I'm happy to answer any questions that people may have, and I'm really grateful that we have people in the community that are willing to put their name on the ballot to help make Coverts an amazing place to be. So thank you for each and every one of you that's putting your name forward or is considering putting your name forward. That's all I got.
Awesome. Any questions for Counselor Armin's? No, we'll do it against Pottery.
Yes, well, yeah. Yeah, I pretty much see what you're saying, Minor's Days and some other events, other parades on American Cores, which is great. Like maybe August was a bit of a storm, we did have the Wetlands Committee meeting, which is included here. And upcoming meetings, we have the community culture, community housing, and economic enhancement committees coming up in the next couple of weeks. So most of those meetings should be wrapping up, hopefully getting their, everything ready to pause, I guess, for a while. And yeah, I think that's everything, everybody else, so thank yous. I was just gonna say I'm not gonna last date, but I, I let Counselor Caldwell last, you know, honestly.
Any questions for Counselor Pottery? No? Okay. Someone want to correspondence, we do have the Shnuk Arch Library Board Report. Anything on that for anyone, are we good to move past it? Alright, we'll move on to our other business here, so the first one that we have is a request from the Legion for a bench. I am going to ask Council if they have any questions. Maybe it's not a bench, it's for bench installation, I think is what it is more so. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Looking at this, I think it's great that the Legion wants to put a bench in a place where it's gonna be used in town. I was just curious if administration had any idea what it would cost to mount that bench as requested in the, in the letter? If you guys have spent any time in Canada, or have any rough numbers?
Thank you for the question, I, I don't have an exact price. Typically with a bench, we'll put a concrete pad under it. And then work with, with them on, on the location that's suited for any future planning that we have for the area. But yeah, I could, I could bring back to council an exact price if it's something that you want to move forward with. And locations, I, I'm gonna guess with staff time and installation, fifteen hundred dollars type of thing for concrete. It's kind of a ballpark.
Okay.
You know, maybe a thousand, fifteen hundred, a thousand if we do our finishing, if we have to get a concrete finisher, it might be a bit more.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, I, I, I guess a question, I'm not sure who to ask, to the mayor. I, I'm a little bit unclear on exactly what they're asking, so they're saying if, if town personnel would be able to install this bench, but then they're also potentially asking if the town is willing to donate. And I guess, right now, we, we have our community grant fund. Maybe, this doesn't perfectly fit in there, but would it be appropriate to ask them to apply that way for, as opposed to just making a motion to, to spend money or to give an donation, to have them apply? We know that we have still a sum in, in that string, that, that line that we set aside. And I think that would be the more appropriate way to, to contribute to the, the cost of it. And then my next question is, then they just want us to use the town time or the town resources to install it, like use public works? They're not asking like, okay.
That's, that's the question I'm unclear, either they're asking us to do it or us to oversee hiring someone to do it.
Right.
That's, that's the two ways that it can go, right?
Yeah.
That'll, that'll carry the cost as well.
Yeah. And even just to have them come back and, and if we do want to put it in, do we, you know, does council want it to come through the, the grant stream or, or not?
Yeah, good questions, I think perhaps tonight we can decide if the location was acceptable for council as a minimum. And if council approves of the location, then administration can follow up with the next steps. And if we require any additional information, come back to council. We can do so, but I don't think it'll have a large budget implication at this point, it would just be within budget. So, and we can, we can sort out the details and keep council up to date on, on our recommendation.
Yeah, my, my, okay, so my, my question about this is, is that in terms of like people wanting to put permanent fixtures around town for things, like whether it's this or it's something different, what is the, what is the process that we have? Do we, like, do we have a process for that? So say someone wanted to, I don't know, I'm just saying someone, an art installation, like how would that, because like this is kind of similar in that way too, right? Like you're wanting to put something, a permanent piece on public property. And I just, I guess I'm, I'm curious that how do we make sure that that goes through the right channel as well? So that when we're looking at our, whether it's our rec master plan or whatever master plans that we may have for the community, that we're considering that people, we're not just mixed up around it. So, so I guess that's, that's a question I just have. Or, and maybe we don't have anything else, Mike.
Yeah, it's a great, great question.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and I agree, definitely, one of the things that we've been looking at, some of our other committees are, you know, art policies and different ways to approach things. At Coverts, we haven't formalized a lot of these, a lot of these things yet. But as we are kind of wrapping up launching a lot of these foundational pieces that this council has been working on, well, we're going to be able to start building out some of these other more intricate pieces and how they fit in. So in terms of an art policy for the town, we don't have one. We've received quite a few requests for a bench or memorial policy too. But that's something we also, I think is really tied to a recreation master plan as well. So there's some, some pieces that we, we are aware of that we'd like to build, but we don't at this moment in time. So considering the timing of this one, it sounds like the Legion has already purchased the bench.
They've ordered it, have you?
They've ordered it, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
So they have planned for that expense of their own. And at this point, are, are seeking just assistance and putting it near the side of town as part of the program. So yeah, certainly a gap we look forward to addressing in the future.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, just have one additional question for administration. Just with consideration of this being coming through the community grant program, there is a limit to how much we can provide each organization within that grant program. Has the Legion already applied for a grant this year? Because I, I've just, I guess my thoughts are just if we were to use the grant funding for something like this, which very well could be, I just think we have to be mindful of how we go about doing that, because if we send it through the grant application process, then essentially we're saying one group has used up more than what we would typically allow a single group to use. So I just want to make sure that we're following our policy, and if there are funds available, maybe there's another way to just allocate those funds through motion to council out of that reserve, because we haven't hit the, the maximum for the year.
I think that that's a great point though, right? Like, and I think that that's one of the reasons why I, I like this going through the grant program, is because we can kind of see who's used what, right? That's that we're not like giving significant amount to one organization versus, versus another maybe. Because like, I, I do believe that we like, we did provide the Legion with some, some funding through the grant program once for the, the. through the grant program once for the craft component. But we also did something with, we gave them another donation of some sort. Did we not? Some, we're calling it a crack.
The taxes.
Yes, some relief. So I think that like, that's part of it too, right? However, like I do appreciate what they're wanting to do and logically it makes a lot of sense to me. I guess it's just a matter of how do we, how do we look at the money that we have? And how do we build that around for everybody to utilize and or maybe they don't, I don't know. I guess that's just a question that I have. Yes?
I see, I see, and like we've been talking about this in the I forget the name of the certification. What is the name of that? The, I think the sponsorship aspect is different than the grant aspect of it, I guess, right? So originally the grant is for like events, then we opened it up to be like capital stuff as well. I think because this is like a public event on property. And essentially, if we had our time to kind of finish our grant, our sponsorship program, it would be, you may purchase a bench for X amount of dollars, which would be, you could completely, you know, may or may not be subsidized, I don't know, decided where that threshold lies, right? But I see it as sponsorship rather, because they're bringing their own funds to build something. So I do see it slightly different than a grant, I guess, than a community event grant. I mean, it's not just events, but community building grant, I guess, is how I have seen it. So I wish we had our program in place, but I don't, I don't think it is supposed to be a community grant program. Because I guess one of the things between a gap is, well, what is the outcomes, what is the, we're on, what are your, what are your, what are your company people sitting on that?
That makes sense, yeah. That makes sense. We do have this motion that has been like potentially prepared for us about doing some research and coming back to council. And so I'm not sure if anybody is interested in that. I know Carmen had suggested, like, are we okay with the location? See what people, where you're kind of at with that. My opinion is, is I think that as long, like, I leave that up to you as town staff, knowing the future of like what we've kind of put out there, what the organization or what the town could want it to look like, making sure that it doesn't like impede anything that we're wanting to do, so. That's my thought, but love to hear everyone else at council too on that component. Yeah?
I was gonna say, I'd be happy to make that motion.
Sure.
So I move that administration research suitable locations and costs for installing memorial bench near the Senetaph, purchased by the Colhurst Legion, and report back to council at the September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five regular council meeting.
Good. Any questions on the motion? Alright, so council, I'm going to move on. Would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, I truly believe that bench location is above like the community garden, where we can say, yes, we're in support of them providing a bench and wherever administration needs it most applicable. I think that's more an administration decision. I mean, when I look at community centers as a whole, having an extra bench out there would be great for events. There's lots of people who will try for breath, for a shared or something, smoke, right? And they'd have a spot that they can sit down. So I think that that would be good. But I do like the idea of working with the community groups to kind of create a more, I don't know how I want to put this, making the town a better place through the small little interactions with the community groups. So I think that this would be a win overall if we could do this.
Great.
I think it's more up to administration for how that looks and if it's within our budget, then council can decide that.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this? And no, council recommends the administration research suitable locations and costs for installing memorial bench near the Senetaph, purchased by the Colhurst Legion, and report back to council at the September sixteen, two thousand twenty-five regular council meeting. I will call question, all is a favor. The motion is carried. And so then we have in front of us the report from the Colhurst Minor Basketball Department. They sent us this. And so I will just see if anybody has any questions on this. Who was thanking for the report? It's great. Go ahead.
Just the comment, I just wanted to say this sounds like a slam dunk for the community. I'm happy to, I'm happy to.
I was so mad.
I know. I'm happy to see the report come back just the way, I think it's great to actually see the after action report for the community grants and showing the impact on the community. So thank you to those that.
Did you write that in your notes?
No.
Okay. I was gonna follow up.
No, I'm just, I'm just happy to see members of the community stepping up and then providing information afterwards, so that we can look at the grant lines being spent wisely.
Anything else for a minimum? Alright, so with that, we are going to move into closed session. So for our lovely guests at the back, this is the part where unfortunately we have to ask you to leave because we are going to move into closed session. But thank you for coming and joining us today. I hope, I hope it was informative. I don't know if it was, but. Alright, so with that, have a very nice. I'll ask for motion to go into closed session, please. Go ahead.
I move that council move into closed session regarding the Senate Storm Pond in accordance with the Access to Information Act, section twenty-nine advice from officials, and section thirty-two privileged information, and for personal matter in accordance with section twenty disclosure disclosure harmful to personal privacy and section twenty-two confidential evaluations.
Good. I will call question, all is a favor.
We have to go back.
It's our room.
Oh, okay. We're in the whole time.
Okay.
Okay. Can I get a motion to go back? I know what session is.
Sure. I'm glad we returned over to the session at, what is it, 8:25 PM?
Full question, all was a favor. Uh, what she's carried and we do not have any business arising so we will adjourn at 8:25.